This conference will now be recorded.
Notice is hereby given that Lago Vista City Council is holding a council work session on Monday, April 5th, 2021 at 6:35 PM as prescribed by VTC, a government code section 551.041, to consider the following agenda items. Sandra, please note that all of our council members are here except for Councilor Weatherly, and if he does join us, we'll add him at that point. We will start with our pledge of allegiance to the US and the Texas flag, so please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. And Sandra, Councilor Weatherly has joined us at 6:36. All right, citizen comments. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. Let's see, I haven't checked my email. I don't think I... If I have somebody that signed up, I don't have that in front of me. So I'll just let me know. Otherwise, is there anybody in the audience who has citizen comments that are not in relation to Sunset Park? All right. We shall move on. All right. Discussion regarding Phase Two Lago Vista Sunset Park Development. I shall read this. Well, this is a council work session. Hopefully, it won't be too long. But I say that every meeting, so it could be really long. Citizen comments will be taken at the end. So... We're talking Phase Two Lago Vista Sunset Park. This was brought on because we had some confusion a few meetings ago. We were discussing bathrooms, and there seemed to be some confusion about what was actually in the budget and what...
...will now be recorded.
All right. Sorry about that. So there was some confusion about what was in the budget. As far as what council had approved and what staff thought they had in the budget. And so just to clarify exactly what was in the budget for the park, we have delayed it for this work session. And so tonight, we're going to start. I have Chris Mobley with Parks and Recreation. It'll be given a presentation. We have Eric Belay with Art City Engineer, Public Works, on hand for any kind of engineering-type questions. We have Star available for any financial questions. We're going to start with Phase Two Lago Vista Sunset Park. Start with our grant and the responsibilities that we have as far as the Parks and Wildlife grant. What points we have to meet to make sure that we continue to receive our letter of funds or funding for the grant. And then we're going to go into items. Oh. Part of Phase Two discussion is what we currently have listed as projects under Phase Two. Chris will be presenting some options for Phase Two. So we may be able to substitute items, exchange items, delete items, do some stuff with our Phase Two projects and still be able to receive all the points required by the grant. From there, we will go into non-grant-related projects, items of need, and discuss the priorities there. And then we will talk about funding after that. How much we have available and what we can do. So I am going to start with Mr. Chris Mobley, and he has a show for us. And hopefully, he has permissions. And you're muted at the moment, Mr. Mobley. There we go.
All right. Thank you so much. Can y'all see the start of the presentation? I'm trying to share my screen.
Negative.
Okay.
Can I see it?
Can you see it now?
Nope.
All right. I've got my expert technical person helping me out here, so we're going to try to figure this out. And if not, I can just go through the presentation without sharing the screen.
I have it available myself.
Okay. That's right. I sent it to you. I sent it to you this morning, didn't I?
So let's see. Here's the... That's the PDF. Let's go back over here. Let me find the one that's got the PowerPoint on it.
All right.
Ah, here we go.
Now we got it?
Nope. Let me see if I can find it. No, no, there it is. Okay, there's PowerPoint.
I see probably Mr. Mobley's presentation has popped up on my screen.
Oh, there it is. Yes, we're good.
My techno expert came through. Okay, just a little background on this. I started with the city 16 months ago, and Phase One was already sort of planned. I now, after being here a year and a half, have a better idea about where I think we can use the funds and some of the amenities that we need in the park. I took the time to take advantage of the opportunity to be able to present to you guys. I showed the presentation to Mayor Tedwell and Inter-City Manager Chan, and they said, "Just share it with the group." So with that, here is the presentation. The first is Lago Vista Sunset Park, Something for Everyone. So really wanting to just not consider this a sports complex, but activities for everyone. And as I present the ideas to you guys, that's what I'm trying to do. Okay. The vision, if you can think about it, it's a Norman Rockwell painting. You're in a park, and there's kites flying, and there's dogs, and there's kids in a restroom, and there's people playing ball. And it's just, it's that kind of atmosphere. I want someone to say, "Look what they are doing in Lago Vista." That's one of my visions. I want them to, people to really say, "Have you seen what they're doing?" I want people who are moving to Lago Vista to be able to get, you know, get on the city's webpage and get the information and say, "Have you seen what they're doing there? Look at all the amenities they have. Look at this great park." When people want to relocate to Lago Vista, or a company wants to, or we get a store here, I want them to look at that and say, "This is a great place to be," so I'm trying to get business with this, too. If you're... Yes, sir.
Is it possible you can expand your... Make it fullscreen or something? We can only see like half of your slide.
We can... My techno expert will try.
Or start to...
Ask him.
Start the presentation somehow, so we're just seeing the slide and not the tabs?
Okay. Make it a little bigger.
Seeing the slide instead of what?
Okay. Still can't advance it.
Ask him if he can see.
Can y'all see the bigger slide now?
Oh, it gets bigger, but we lose more information. There should be a way for you to start presentation, like either over on the left. That pancake.
On most browsers, F11, on most browsers, F11 will get you to fullscreen mode. So I think, Chris, if you just push your function 11 key, that may fix it.
Okay.
Yeah, the upper margin.
Share it from the actual PowerPoint program, because it looks like you're sharing it from a PDF or something and not from the actual PowerPoint.
Because we don't have PowerPoint.
We don't have PowerPoint, that's why. Yes.
Okay.
All right. Well, never mind.
All right.
You'll just have to kind of scroll down as you're reading, because all right now, we can see the first four lines.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll try to scroll a little better then. Okay. So visiting Lago Vista. When you come in and visit Lago Vista, I want them to say, "Hey, have you seen that park? Have you seen what they're going on?" What I'm trying to do is get people coming in, visiting from Cedar Park, instead of us always going out and visiting somewhere else. I want something that we can be proud of and the residents can be proud of. And the same thing with living Lago Vista. I want you, you know, if you're living here, I want this to be something for everyone. All right, so how do we accomplish it? Well, we need to diversify recreational opportunities. That's the number-one thing. I've got four athletic fields in the inventory. I don't think I need six athletic fields and not having playgrounds, skate parks, all those other things. So I'm trying to diversify the opportunities for everybody. How can that be accomplished? I'll just get right out there. I am proposing to eliminate the two baseball fields. Right now, we have two fields at the upper complex and two fields at Sunset Park. I believe four fields meets the needs of the community right now. What I'd like to replace those two fields with to increase the inventory is a playground. A playground for two to 12-year-olds that's covered, really nice for the kids. We have one playground in our system right now, and it's in the upper sports complex, and it's not in the best of shape. The next thing that I would, I suggest would be a skate spot, and that's the pictures that you see right there. It's a smaller version of a skate park, but it's done very, very well. The one that you see right there is from Flugerville. Really nice. We've been out there. We took some pictures of it. Very well-used. Just a nice element, nice element for the kids to be able to skate. A community garden came up recently. I think it'd be great to have a community garden for the public to be able to, you know, to grow their plants and everything. And then the last one, and we're going to try this. This is a video of what's called basketball bank shot. And we are going to give this a go to see. It should be a 2 minute and 49 second video, and can y'all see that?
Yes.
Wow, success. Okay. We're having to buffer it a smidgen.
Don't have this problem.
More than a smidgen.
Well...
I'll describe a little bit what it is. It's 24 basketball goals that are all different backboards, that are all different geometry shapes. You have to bank the ball in to get it, to go through the hoop. The great thing about it is it's all-inclusive. You can roll up in a hand, in a... There we go. And you got it now?
Professional staff have been training in the area of adaptive physical education and recreation. We also provide direct services for townships and schools to model how a program can be run and then turn it over to them, so that we don't become a gatekeeper. A few months ago, maybe more than that, actually, probably a year and a half ago, I came across a website that had this system in the background, and it was just mesmerizing to me. And I immediately found out where it was and introduced myself to Dr. Brenner. I've been in the field of adaptive physical education and inclusive physical education and recreation for 21 years. Did my undergraduate work at Old Dominion and my graduate work at the University of Virginia. So although Maryland is not the same state, it's close enough to feel welcome back a little bit. I think, you know, a lot of people look at this system, and it has a novelty to it. And it looks, you know, I think, kind of in an entertainment sense. But the real strength of this is the educational component. It's part of the spectrum of services that children and all people need. And Dr. Brenner is a champion of play alongside and universal design and non-combative play, and all of those are so needed today in our society. And with the increase of children with disabilities and really the increase of individuals who are kind of burned out from traditional sports or just don't fit into that mold, a product and a system like Bank Shot really has a unique fit. And Rockville is very, very lucky to have this system here, several of them. So, you know, as you play today, we'll all be walking around to kind of give you our perspective on it. But I will tell you that I think, as you move forward as a community, that one of the things that I would recommend, if asked, is to make a dedicated league out of this, a dedicated process out of this. Just as there's a T-ball league and a pop Warner Football League, there should be a Bank Shot League that comes out in the fall and in the spring and in summer, even if it's six to eight weeks. Because if you just play it to have fun, it really doesn't grow, and it doesn't challenge you, and it doesn't become as inclusive as it can be. So the strength of the system is not how wonderful, beautiful it looks, but it's how it plays and it builds into the strengths of people who don't typically fit into traditional recreational sports and activities. So thank you, Dr. Brenner, for inviting me, and, you know, enjoy the courts. I'm going to enjoy it as well.
There we go. All right, we're starting to figure this out. Thank you. Okay. I was very excited about that. That's one of the things that is very, would be very unique to Lago Vista. It's nice that it handles all type of kids. It's a nice art piece, because the park is fairly green and brown, and there's a lot of color into it and everything. And it's just a, something that would be different that I feel like meets the needs of the community. So with that being said, these are my priorities for the park, and especially for Phase Two. What I think that we would need to have a good park. We're definitely going to have, at some time, going to have to address access to the park. Everybody knows coming around that corner is probably something that needs to be addressed. Some kind of restroom facility. A park needs a restroom facility. I don't have any recommendations on how big or what kind. I just know that I need a restroom facility. Pave the parking. That should be a priority in Phase Two. We need to pave the parking. A storage space or a building for my equipment out there that take, that... So we can take care of the field. That doesn't necessarily have to be part of the restroom or concession. Matter of fact, it would probably be better if it was separate. It'll be a little more cost-effective. Maybe use the space that the, that the storage space was going to be in the restroom. Use that for more restrooms. That probably makes a little bit more sense. And then my priorities, when it comes to the amenities or a playground, I think if you got a playground and a restroom or not, you got a park. Skate spot, I think, is a very unique thing, something that the community really enjoy. You saw the basketball bank shot, and then adding the community garden. So I think if we open up the park, and I've got a multipurpose field that has, that can you do soccer, flag football, exercise class, I've got a sand volleyball court, I've got a great trail, I've got a scent garden, I've got a playground, a skate spot, a basketball bank shot, a community garden, I think we are getting something for everybody. So that's, that would be my input on what the next phase needs to be. And then specifically, the phase after that, what's next? If we're adding these amenities, we're definitely going to need some additional parking. It'd be nice to have a covered pavilion, so parents and grandparents can take their kids down, visit the park, have a birthday party, have a get-together on the covered pavilion. Additional trails, I think, are essential, and then get some electric and lighting into the park. And then my last slide is old buzzed lightyear to... These are the things that we might consider past that. Do we have a... I've seen parks that have, you can plug in for food trucks. Have an amphitheater, a splash pad, disc golf, a labyrinth, a pump track, which is like a bicycle track. The kids just pump, it's just little humps, and they did, it's a pump track. They just go up and down on that. So that's my vision. It's something for everybody. I think it meets the needs of the community a little more than adding two more, two more fields. In some of the next phases, the Parks and Rec Advisory Council, one of the things that they're supposed to advise us on is what kind of amenities and recreation needs that we need. So recapping, it's a little change from the athletic complex, but I think it meets the needs of the community more. I think it identifies with Lago a little more. Look what Lago is doing. Addresses the needs of the younger families coming in. You've got, we've got a lot of different activity for the community. So I've taken probably most of your time, but that was just sort of the things that I'm looking for in Phase Two, and I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to address this.
All right. Thank you very much, Chris. So obviously, question number one. We've got this $500,000 grant out there, our second one. Letter, a promissory letter or a letter, $500,000. We've received some of it, about 10%, roughly. So we've got about 90% of that still sitting out there. So to make sure that we meet that requirement, get those points and stuff that we need to do to get that taken out those ballparks. I mean, are these, these other ideas that you've brought forward, or are those things that we can substitute into this?
Well, what we need to do is to score those again. But Eric's had conversations with Texas Park and Wildlife, and we feel fairly comfortable that the things that we're adding would take place of just two athletic fields. So they're actually more diverse, and they meet a different audience and other. We would specifically know that when, when we get, that you guys tell me you like this vision, and we can start to look at this kind of thing, then we could put this to, we could put this to the test on, you know, do we get to keep the grant? So I didn't want to be presumptuous and think that you guys were going to like everything they were going to do, but I just want to say, ask you, if this is the right direction we're going, we can score those, we can score those points. Eric's fairly sure, and I'll let him speak for himself if I speak over him, that the cost of those two fields, I can probably get those four things that we're asking for. And to me, that's the key. Do we have, do we have these things now in our inventory as opposed to having six fields and nothing? Or do we have four fields and these other things in our inventory? That's sort of where I'm envisioning this. So we will check and see, once we get that, "Hey, I like these elements." We'll score those with Texas Park and Wildlife and see what, and see how that comes out.
Okay, so that would be those four. So the access and restroom facilities, all the parking, those are things that are not eligible under the grant. So those would be monies that we are responsible for and access to the grant funds.
Eric, I'd have, if Eric can chime in on that to see if that's correct. But I don't know that we score the restroom or the parking lot. I think it's just those recreation elements.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure that's the case. That's why it wasn't included in Phase One of the Texas Parks and Wildlife, because they wouldn't account for that.
Right.
All right, Eric, do you have something to present to us?
Yes, Mayor. Can you guys hear me?
I can. I can barely see your screen, but...
So one of the things on the grant, before we get started on this presentation, obviously, the city has received the full $500,000 for the Phase One of the grant. Phase Two of the grant, the deadline is next summer, I believe September of 2022, to have everything complete. So it's a three-year grant. So as of right now, the Phase Two has been designed. That's where we are. I did, so I'll talk a little bit about the spending, then I'll get, we'll go through what Chris was referring to, and then the funding and the money for that, and estimate and what it looks like, where it could be placed. So one of the things, I just want to go back really quick on the funds that have been spent on this project. So the project started around 2016, roughly, and the city spent some money on procuring the grant, about $32,000. And this, this expenses were presented to council last year, in 2020, I believe, last spring. And also, they were presented to the Parks and Rec Committee. So if anybody wants a copy of this, we'd be happy to share this line by line of what, where the money has been spent. In 2017, there was $58,000 that was spent. This part of the, a lot of it did involve bird surveys and a lot of other things, topographic survey and preparing for, preparing for design. On 2018, 2019 budget year, the city spent $279,000. And then for Phase One completion, spent about a little over $1.5 million on 2019, 2020. And this year so far, we have spent about $46,000 on the park. So overall, the city has spent $1.9 million for Phase One, getting to this point, including some of the design that has been done for Phase Two. So, and obviously, we're sticking $10,000 from the Texas Parks and Wildlife. And of that, the city has paid from our general fund, a little over $1.4 million.
So just want to recap a little bit.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. I apologize. But I know I can't see your screen. I suspect others can't. But all those numbers and financials you just showed, I can't see anything.
It wasn't meant for me to go in line by line to see what each line item was, which is basically showing an overall how much was spent.
Right, right. No, I get it. But it would be nice if us and the citizens who are online could actually see what you're presenting. So I don't know if there's a way to make it bigger.
Okay, so can you see that?
Yeah, that's a bit better, except it cuts off part of your, part of your screen, like the right side.
Right. So what we can do, council is email this out to you, and I believe, I don't think I have everybody's email, but I did send it out to everyone's email that I had. So you should probably have a copy of it on your email inbox. And we can certainly make this available online if needed. But overall, just to point out, overall, that we have spent $1.9 million on the park. And for that $1.9 million, if you see this exhibit, which is Phase One and Phase Two of the park. Phase One is, Phase Two are items that are in green. So in Phase Two, we have volleyball court, we have the baseball, the two baseball fields. There's a playground and paving of the parking lot. What's interesting is that part of the grant in Phase is also included the existing, I don't want to make this a little more confusing, but the existing softball field is actually part of Phase Two. Last, when this project was awarded for Phase One, the softball field was a bid option. Whether council would be interested in just go ahead and constructing that Phase Two of the softball field during Phase One, or if council wanted to move that to Phase Two. At the time, council decided to go ahead and construct this softball field. Although technically, as far as, as far as the grant is concerned, that's a Phase Two project. So hopefully, everyone can see the cost for Phase One. So on Phase One, it was estimated, this is the same thing that was presented to council prior to the budget. Prior to the budget being, I believe it was last spring, sometime in March. So Phase One elements, construction was $1.5 million and some other soft costs and engineering. Overall, it was $1.836 million for all of Phase One components. And as I mentioned, we have spent $1.9, including some of the engineering that was done for, for Phase Two construction. for Phase Two construction. So as this was presented to council last spring, you'll see this 1.36 million dollars, which was part of the budget. So Phase Two park elements, including the, the baseball, the two baseball and volleyball fields, and 972,000 dollars in face engineering. So in addition to that, we had trail, playground, picnic tables, some solar riding, paving of the parking lot, and paving some of the sidewalks instead of the decomposed granite that we have out there. So overall, Phase Two was 1.36 million dollars. That's what was estimated. Now you, and, and out of that, Phase One and Phase Two, 1 million dollars from the grants, from the two grants, and obviously, the rest of that would come out of the city's budget. So a little over, little under 2.2 million dollars from the city's budget for including Phase One and Phase Two. Phase Three of the parks, you'll notice one of the things in there, that originally was intended is the bathrooms were part, gonna be part of Phase Three. One of the confusions came that during the budget process, the city was using Gov, Open Gov, which is a fantastic software, but city staff was a novice of it. And one of the things that we understood towards the end is when you input projects on one side, it doesn't automatically populate throughout the budget. So one of the things that happened is originally, city staff was preparing to put in the bathrooms, at 350,000 dollars, were prepared to put in the bathrooms as part of the, you know, construction of the park Phase Two. One of the things the city manager at the time requested is, as we build the budget, to put in notes there on the site so that he could understand what all was going on. To my ignorance, I didn't realize that those notes were actually public. So one of the things that those notes are no, nothing more as, than a sticky note or an engineering notepad to create an estimate. So as we were trying to build the estimate originally, we were trying to put in the 350,000 dollars as part of the budget of the park. And as, as, as time went on, as it got closer to the actual approving of the budget, city staff was instructed to remove the bathrooms from, from those and make the bathrooms a separate project than the park Phase Two. So which, the city staff did that and created a separate project. However, in approving of the budget line item, that line item wasn't added into, wasn't added into the budget that was approved. Do you want to show this line item here? And I was confused last time when, when council was talking about 200,000 dollars, I wasn't quite understanding. Then I went back and we actually looked at the notes, then understood, okay, this was actually intended to be simply coming up with an estimate to, coming up an estimate to create, for the budget, so that the city manager could understand how this estimate was put together. We didn't realize that this was going to be made public, and it wasn't, it wasn't definitely not intended to confuse the public. So one of the things that happened is that 350,000 dollars for the park project was not added into this line, or wasn't added as part of what you see here, which is what council approved. So that's as simple as that, just a human error. So at the time, when that was presented to council, the bathrooms were presented to council, I honestly believe that, you know, that 350,000 dollars was budgeted, but after talking with Star, it erroneously was not. So that was one of the mishaps that happened during the budget. So council approved a balanced budget, and that 350,000 dollars in short, that 350,000 dollars was not part of that balanced budget, regardless of that line item showing up on the CIP document. So theoretically, every line item in the CIP document should be included in the budget. It just didn't happen on this one because of human error using this new software. Any questions on that particular item before I get to Chris's estimate?
Counselor Prince.
Yeah, I, I, I have quite a few budget questions, to be perfectly honest. And I, I feel like we just jumped right into the middle of, you know, looking at bank shots and looking at line items. And I'm, I'm really interested in the big picture on the parks and wondering if we can back up. And, and Mr. Belay, you were, you were throwing a lot of numbers out and answering some of these questions, but frankly, I just, I couldn't keep up with you. And so what, let me ask a couple of questions, and then you can, you can hopefully clarify, or someone can clarify. So what I've heard in the past on the park is that the city donated land, and that was a big part of our contribution, and there was a grant associated with that, and we were not spending much in the way of cash. That's the storyline that I had heard on Phase One. What I'm hearing tonight is, I haven't heard anything about the value of land, but I heard that we put in about 1.8 million in cash on Phase One, and I haven't heard anything about any grant money on Phase One. So that's all just straight out of the city's capital fund, is, is apparently the case. So I want to clarify that. And then once we get through those questions on Phase One, then I want to ask some questions on Phase Two.
So on Phase One, go ahead, Mayor.
I was going to say, at this point, is that, is it something better for Star to answer in regards to, you know, what's been put up in cash and stuff, or?
I'm, Mayor, I'm good either way.
Well, you got the floor, Eric. Go ahead.
Okay, so when, when Roy and I started working here three years ago, that's the same story we were told. Until we started putting the numbers together, and they just didn't add up. So we were told at the time that the city, all the city needed was 60,000 dollars to pay for engineering work. And that's all that was going to be needed. Once we put some of the numbers together, you know, component things like you got to have trails, you got to have some sort of parking that has to happen, that, that irrigation wasn't included in the original estimate. So some thing, once we started adding things up, they just didn't, numbers just did not add up on doing that. So overall, once we started adding numbers together, and it obviously became clear that there was no way this park was going to be built with 62,000 dollars, as we were told at the time. So, and to start, and obviously, we sat down with the Parks Committee at the time and the city manager, and discussed if do we want to move forward, do we want to just shut this down right now? So the, the direction at the time was, we want to move forward, we need this park. And that's what city staff did at the time, is we prepared documents, prepared estimates, and sent it out for bid. Bids came in for Phase One, 1.5 million dollars just for the construction of both fields, not including all the other components that were associated with the grant. So overall, the city has spent 1.4 million dollars out of the city's money, plus 500,000 dollars that came out of the grants. And the city has gotten refunded 500,000 dollars for Phase One. So the city does have their money on hand, or we did receive their money.
Okay, that, that's, if, I, I think I still was reserving questions for Phase Two, if I may.
I just wanted, I apologize. I wanted to ask a question about what we just heard, if you're okay with that.
Okay, please do.
So I, I, I'm going to back up Paul on this 100%. I was on the council when we got the first grant, or applied for the first grant. And we were told categorically that we put up the land, and that is going to be our match, and we will get the 500 dollars for putting up the land. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the land was valued by the state at, it was 700 or 750,000. So there was no more effort that needed to happen on the part of the city, at least this is the way it was sold in council time, in order for us to get that 500,000 dollars. And so I, I'd really like to understand how that didn't come to fruition.
Mayor, may I?
Sure.
This is Star. Kevin, you were on council. It was in 2016 when we first started talking about all of this, to try to answer Paul's question, because he had a point blank question, and try to get yours at the same time, maybe. The information that Eric had presented is correct. To date, we have spent 1.931 million out of our city general fund reserve account. That's how we've been funding the, the park since the get-go. When we applied for the first grant, we put up the land, which was part of our match, and we put 585,000 aside from general fund reserve into the park fund. That was part of just showing our matching dollars over there, and when that's what we did, that, those dollars have never been spent. They're still sitting there in the park fund. The first grant was for 500,000. That was the first award letter that went out. But we didn't get that award letter on that, we didn't actually get the dollars from that first 500,000 dollar grant until April and then August of 2020. That's how long it takes to actually get these dollars in hand. We get the award letter upfront saying, okay, we're going to give it to you. Now you do your stuff, but all of them based on reimbursements. So until we've actually spent the money, gone through the process that Eric goes through, getting all the documentation together, all the check copies, everything that he has to submit to prove we've actually spent the money, we don't get it. So as of now, we've been awarding the second letter that says we're going to get another 500,000 dollars. But with, that's the second part of the whole million that we, we talked about we were going to get. We've only received 58,000 of that one. We got that back in January. It's a very slow process on the grants. That's why I came to y'all about, I guess it was a month ago, saying, I'd like to apply for these grants over here. They're not going to award them to 2023. You know, there is that urgency to apply for it, because then you hope, yes, we'll get it, but you're still not going to get the money for two years down the road. So just to make it real clear and real simple, all the dollars that we are spending are out of pocket, they're coming out of the general fund reserve account. And as we get those grant money, see, I'm the first 500,000 came to the bank, I transferred it right back to the general fund reserve to replace it. Does, does that make sense?
It, it makes.
If I may, Kevin.
Oh, go ahead.
So what I heard is, we spent 1.9 million, a little over that for Phase One. We've gotten 500,000 back. So net, we spent 1.4 million to get through where we are today. And in addition to that, we donated land, which may have been worth some 700,000 dollars per, per Mr. Sullivan. That, that I think is the complete answer for Phase One, as I hear it. Now, I want to.
That, and we do have the 585 reserved in the park fund that we did take out of the general fund reserve to park there. Now, we can spend that at some point against the park projects. We were just been reluctant to do so yet, because we thought, well, that's kind of like the very final payment. We come in and now we, here's our 500,000, 585 we've been sitting on. I don't know, Eric would know better than I on the grants, whether that would ever come into play later on. It's like, for us to put up any matching dollars over here, it's like, yep, we got them.
But if, if, if I may, that 585 is not part of the 1.9 million and has never been spent? Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct. Because it's not spent, it's parked over there, but it's not spent. And it isn't a restricted of fund, now that it's in the park fund, we can't spend it for anything other than the park.
Okay, good, got it. Thank you. And, and then now, I think, Mr. Sullivan, I'm, I think I'm clear on Phase One, and if you are, I'd like to move to Phase Two.
If I could just ask one more question, and then I promise I'll be quiet. So Ms. Lockwood, I, I think the part that is confusing me is that when we went through the process at the very beginning, again, the council was told that we would not have any out-of-pocket expenses necessary in order to earn the first 500,000 dollar grant, because we were putting up land that was equal to that amount, that expenditure, and that we would not have to expend anything. But it, it sounds as if that was not true at all, that we actually had to expend money and donate the land to the park in order to get any reimbursement at all. Is that an accurate statement?
That would be much more likely, yes.
Yeah, just, okay.
If I may add to that, one of the things that, when the grant was applied for, and when we look back at the grant, the first grant, when that was applied for, they were simply including an estimate just for the ball fields. There were no irrigation included, there was no ADA accessible routes, there was no parking lot, there's no widening or the driveway. There were a lot of items that were not included in that estimate for the park. There was no earthwork, and I, I guess at the time, they didn't account that there's rock in this area. So the earthwork was a big line item that made this project very expensive. So when you look at it, what they said they were going to build, if you look at it from a bird's point of view, that is all correct, but all the other components that are associated with that were not included as part of the estimate that was shown in the grant application at the time.
Well, and, and that's all fine and well. I, I, my main point is, is that we were sold the, and, and not by staff, please don't take that, that way. I think it was Gandalf, I forget his last name, but the gentleman that helped us write the grant, sold it to us that, that we would get the 500,000 by donating the land. And that turned out not to be the case at all. And so I, that's, that's a little bit disappointing.
So just, and, and I, I don't know if this is any clarification, but the way it was explained to me is that we did put both of them up, but when we went for the second grant, we did not have to put anything up for the second grant, because we had the 585 as the matching funds in that reserve, in that, that account already. So we didn't have to put anything up for the second grant. So if you break it down that way, the, the land did cover the first grant, and the 585 covers the matching for the second grant. But that was.
Well, we're working on the second grant now, so that couldn't quite be correct. There's only been two that we've actually received award letters on. We received the first 500,000 real dollars back into the bank in 2020. We've received 58,000 against the second 500. But if they are reimbursement grants, what we could do is probably find the grant paperwork from the first grant, just to see what the verbiage was. And this has changed its, its complexion several times. We've had Melissa as a city manager chair, Mr. Kenneth as interim city manager, Josh as a city manager, Mr. Chan as interim city manager. You know, every time we get a new city manager, a new council, the park has changed how it looks and how it's going to go. And the more time, by the time we were applying and getting some of the grant from the first one, those 2016 expenses didn't qualify anymore. It had to be, all of the money had to be expended within a certain timeframe. So that's part of the urgency of, when we do apply for one, getting, getting on some track and staying kind of sort of on it, so that we can get everything done within that period. Otherwise, some of those earliest expenses never even qualified.
Well, and Mayor, I would add to that, that Ms. Lockwood explained that we had to present receipts and expenditures of funds until we got any of that first 500,000. So it's obvious they didn't reimburse this 500,000 due to the land. It was only because we showed receipts of expenditures.
So if, if I may, then, so Phase One, we spent 1.9 million, put in about 700,000 worth of land. We got 500,000 dollars back in grants. We've got a Phase One park, and that's what it cost us. Phase Two is being, was actually approved by last year's city council, right, at 1.36 million. And my understanding is, we hope to get 500,000 in grant money back on that. So we'll, we'll need to spend 1.36 million, and we hope we'll get 500,000 back. And then tonight's discussion, which I think Mr. Mobley was wanting to have, is what, what, what can he do? What can, what amenities can he choose to put in, or can we choose to put in for the 1.36 million dollars? I think that's, that's, that's the bottom line. But, you know, it's, it's been amazing to me how confusing, and frankly, you know, I, I, as you all know, I quote the budget all the time. The budget book absolutely does not explain what's going on with the park. It says nothing about grant money. It says everything has been paid from the general fund. It says nothing about land value. So, so this just hasn't been summarized in a way that's clear for our citizens, much less, I would say, even for the council. And I remember back in the budget discussions in September of last year, I was not a councilman at the time, but the sitting council members were arguing with each other as to what the, the park cost. So, you know, we need this cleared up. We need a, we need a clear statement from the city on what we spent on Phase One, and what we're going to spend on Phase Two, and, you know, what our plan is. It's just, it's, it's, it's frankly, it's embarrassing.
And some of that other expenses, so when you look at project number, you know, 8243 is the one that's associated with the park. When you look at the expenses, what it doesn't, what we, what we haven't seen is actually every single thing that's been attributed to the park. So all the stuff that Eric was talking about a while ago, that was outside of the grant, you know, he's, we've got numbers now, but we don't, we don't know exactly without breaking that down into all the little things that were charged to the account. we don't know exactly without breaking that down into all the little things that were charged to the account. We don't know, you know, we'd have to pull that up right now. Tonight, we don't have that in front of us.
Mayor. Actually, you do. In Eric's presentation, he showed about four pages or five of N code reports straight out of N code that were detailed listings that gives every single line item expense toward the park through that time period. So those are those numbers add up to the same 1.931 that I'm quoting, but those are just straight out of N code and it tells you um there on those things what it was, whether it was a reimbursement for dirt, cedar breaks, whatever, item by item by item.
And council will think we sent the send my presentation out to, I believe, all members of council. If you don't have it, let us know and we'll try to send it out.
Mayor, if I might ask another question?
Um, yes.
If that's right, um, I I wonder because in reading um, the document that you had that was up on the screen a minute ago that showed like the the different phases, phases one, two, three, and four and expenses. There were a few things that I didn't see. Um, or at least it wasn't a clear to me if they were um included in those numbers or not. Um, so like the 450,000 that we're going to have to pay to convert water uh WWTP one. Um, I'm I'm sorry, W yeah, or WWTP three, whichever it is, to type one water um, so that we can have um uh potable water on the on the on the grass. I didn't see that anywhere. Or if it's there, can you can someone point to me uh or point me in the direction of where that is? Um, and then do we know, are we going to have to pay PEC to bring electric and all of the lights to the park? Um, and if so, there's 750,000 in that document for lighting and is is um, well, actually, it's phase three park elements, bathroom concessions, lighting, electric. Does that 750K include? Well, we might have to pay PEC for the light posts and the electric and all of that stuff. And is that is that really going to account for it? So I'm wondering about those two things. If somebody could help me out with that.
Mayor, I may be able to answer a few of those.
Okay.
So I'll go to the P C one. One of the things we are waiting for is uh, so the 750,000 that includes 400,000 for lighting for four ball fields. Those uh, I believe it called Moscow lighting. They're very expensive, uh, the big, tall, fancy looking ones. So that's 400,000 and the rest of it, we are hoping that with the Sarah phase four coming online, they are going to need phase three power at the entryway and those lives need face three power. One of the things we did not include on the estimate because we are waiting for that is for to Sarah to pay for that extension, which phase three will come uh through the park and we'll tap on to it. So that's um, that's um, I guess in the short version of uh, no, that's not included for to for to pay P C to bring power here. That is not included in the estimate because we are hoping that phase three power will come through the site, hopefully in the next year or so. I'm not sure I remember the second question that uh Councilmember Shalane had.
I was just talking about the uh water treatment so that we can so we can use.
50,000.
That line item was to convert uh type two into type one at the park or basically at the F1 pond. Um, that is a separate project. If it's shown separately on the CIP, that is a separate project, not included as part of the park.
But if we're trying to get like a clear, you know, accurate picture of what the cost of the entire park is going to be, wouldn't we want to include that? Because really we're converting that water so we can use it to water the fields out there because we can't have kids playing on fields that aren't that isn't type one water, right?
That is true. Right now we're using domestic water. Uh, that wasn't included in estimate because it's not a required component of the park. So you can still have a park without that component of the F1. Uh, it's a nice uh, it's a nice thing to do, not to have to waste domestic water on on the park. But on the other hand, it's several very expensive. When you look at it, how long it takes to make up that money, then it could be very well over 10 years to make up that money that uh we'll be spending uh with by we use by using domestic water. So it's one of the things that hasn't been critical and very high priority at the time. The only thing that would make it a high priority is if we can get uh some sort of a reclamation grant, typically L C R A. Um, and as those type of grants that we're hopefully at some point will try to get those. But uh, as L C R A does require for you to demonstrate how much water you'd be saving, they will not uh entertain those type of grants unless you can demonstrate that you are saving this much water. And unfortunately, you we had to have domestic water for that, for the park.
So then I wonder, since the 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 half a million ish to convert the water to type one, since that's not reflected anywhere here in the cost of the park. Um, as you've mentioned, we're using right now, we're using domestic water, which is very expensive. Do you have an idea of what the monthly cost um during especially warmer months, like summer months is uh for us to water the park with domestic water? What roughly, what is that monthly water bill going to look like?
I personally don't have that. We haven't been through a full summer yet with the park. The last summer, the contractor paid that. Uh, I am not sure. I'm hoping Chris or Star will be able to look into that.
Are we thinking thousands of dollars a month?
I'm trying to think in my budget, I think we budget. Uh, we budget $38,000. Now, I don't know, you know, I I don't follow that line item of of how much we spend on water on the park, but we certainly could certainly could get to that number. I just don't have that off the top of my head.
What is the specific question?
Like what we think it's going to cost to water the the park using if we continue using domestic water, um, like an average monthly cost to water the park? Do we have like what we spent maybe for August of last year or July of last year when it was really hot?
I can get you that. I don't have it available for this meeting. That wasn't one of the things I had anticipated. So if I can make a list of things that I can go back to, I'm on my tablet right now, so I can't just pull up in code. Um, but I can get that.
Sorry, just because uh.
I'm sorry?
You tell me the account number, I'll pull it up.
It's going to be Chris's park budget 10, what, 534? And then start looking down whatever water and sewer is 4650. I think it's water.
Uh, I'm going to throw something in here. Don't in the summertime when, you know, we're talking about these high water bills, don't we use any and all the effluent we have on the golf course? There's not even not enough for the golf course? We would likely need to uh use domestic water anyway.
That has been the case in many years, yes. I don't know if that's every year, but yeah. Usually we don't have enough in the summer and too much in the winter. All right. Anybody else?
Well, um, I'm sorry, Mayor. So we didn't have a number for that, right? Roughly?
Oh, yeah, Eric's looking that up. That's right.
Okay, still looking it up. Okay. Um, I okay, and if yeah, if we could just have one or the other, because again, I'm just trying to get it in my brain. Like, what is this total that we're looking at for the park? And I think that's a um that's it's it's important information for us to have, especially if we're going to continue using you know, city water for the foreseeable future, if we're not going to convert that treatment plan anytime soon.
Right. And I know when we first when we first put the grass down, that month was quite a bit more expensive than an average month. Right. Well, you you got to do that to get it to to take hold, yeah. But I think we would have an average. I just don't remember the number. I know I had $38,000 in that and we went over budget. That's the that's the what I recall.
Yeah, I apologize, Mayor. I think I'm I think I won't be able to get it tonight.
Okay. We'll have that on the list for provide. All right. So we've had those presentations. So trying to think here, we've got our we've got our grant money out there. That's 500,000. We've we've got the the items that that uh, Mr. Godwin is Mr. Godwin, Mr. I'm sorry. Mobley, too many Chris's. Um, so we've, yeah, we've got the projects that Chris has presented that he thinks he could substitute in and still meet the the grant things. So um now we got to, you know, where do we go from there? We know we we've got uh priorities based on accessing the park. Uh, from the conversations that I've had with uh Tex Dot, uh, if we wait for them to try and uh purchase right away and expand the existing entrance right now, it could be five years plus and millions of dollars. Uh, right now there's a section uh just to the east that they already have an expanded right of way. And all they according to them, all they would have to do is come in and re stripe it and change, just change up the the way the layout is on the street and they could add the turn lanes and there would not be any purchases or anything and it would be about a $30,000 expense on their part to I assume on their part. They have never mentioned anything about us having to pay for it, but then they haven't said we don't have to pay for it. Uh, they just said it's about a $30,000 expense to to repave. I mean, to re stripe that existing portion of 1431. So um, for us, it would be just a matter of of establishing the driveway from that point into the park. So that is a priority and obviously restrooms of some some point. You know, when I'm looking at or when I'm looking at the budget, I know we have put in 1.36 as far as what we approved back in August. But I'm thinking we with all the other stuff that we've had to spend money on with the winter storm and other kinds of things, uh, I'm not seeing that we still have 1.36 million or actually 1.294 many available for future park projects this year. You know, I'm thinking we've got, you know, we we've got to spend the rest of the 442,000 or whatever, 41,000 that's out there for to meet that matching grant. And then our street and restrooms, it it's about all we've got. I I don't see where um we any longer have that kind of money budgeted. We we did at the beginning of the year, but we don't have access to that money anymore. I I just, I'm I'm too afraid with all the stuff that we've had to spend money on with the winter storm and stuff that I, you know, I don't know that we're going to get get it refunded by FEMA. There's too many um, there's too many what ifs out there. And and I think we need to go pretty conservative from this point on for the rest of this year and only only spend exactly what we have to. I mean, knowing knowing that we do have a lot more to go on this park, you know, for this park to eventually be what we hope it to be, you know, we're looking at 10, 15 year project and lots of money, but you know, for now, I'm thinking we've got to just address absolute needs for this fiscal year. Yes, Councilmember Prince.
Uh, following up on on your comment there, the sort of the cost of the storm, um, I I think it would be very helpful for us to to quantify that and, you know, say, here's what we've spent to date. Here's what we still think we have to spend. Here's what we think we're going to get back from FEMA. Because I have no idea, right? And I have no idea if we spend $100,000 or $700,000. And it it'd be nice to know that and let our citizens know that. Hopefully, a big part of that will be reimbursed, but uh, you know, if we're going to if we're going to stop doing things because of that money, uh, I'd like to know how much money we spent.
So for the um uh, April 27th, we have another work session scheduled. And that is regarding our streets, you know, Lowman Ford. Because there's a lot of expense that goes with Lowman Ford Road that we don't know yet. So the the dollars that you're mentioning there, I was saving for that work session. And just because I don't know right now. Um, I mean, things may change, but you know, my my concern is that uh we'll spend this money and then we won't get it back and um.
Yeah.
You know, I would rather I'd rather us be conservative right now. And then, you know, on the back end, we get that money, then we can add it back into next year's projects or future projects. So but I do hope to have all those numbers for you by the 27th.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Mary.
Oh, thank you. Um, I don't know if you can see my hand or not. Um, yeah, I I think I would tend to um, and you know, agree with you that seems that if if we've got a matching grant that we're um trying to meet your point, you know, make sure we've got or do what we need to do to get that matching grant back, but not go beyond that until we have a better idea of what all these other things are going to cost us. We have a lot of infrastructure work we have to do, to your point. And I think um those kinds of things that we need to have done should come ahead of these things that are more on the want side. And I guess I think the parks, you know, great amenity for our city. But to again, to your point, maybe a five or a 10 year project instead of trying to cram it all into the next, you know, two years or so. Um, plus, I I would actually like some additional information on some of the numbers that were provided to us because there's numbers on that sheet that was on the screen a minute ago that I'm still not sure where they're coming from. Like in phase three, 1.14 million from Travis County. What's that? Is that guaranteed money? Is that another grant we think we're going to go for? Like, what what is that? Then you have
Where did you say that?
545 million under phase four that says Travis County. What's that? Are we sure Travis County is giving us this money? Like, I just have lots of questions on um money here because, you know, we're looking at if we don't get whatever these Travis County funds are. You know, we're looking at an eight million dollar park that we never asked citizens to vote on. Um, and it's it just feels like we we need a whole lot more information, I think, before we can continue to, you know, bleed money into the into into this program or into this project when we have other things that might be a higher priority.
Right. So a lot of that that you're mentioning is future CIP type projects and revenues that haven't been actually put into the budget. We, you know, we have the CIP. We we have two portions of the CIP. Once the what the actual one year thing that's been approved by council. We have two portions of the CIP. One's the actual one-year thing that's been approved by council and everything. But then we also have a second portion that goes out five years. And we put our wish list into that five years. So a lot of that stuff that you're seeing is in that five-year wish list, including the revenues. And when you're talking Travis County, we're in constant conversation with them, hoping that when they do their next bond project, that, you know, this is what we're asking for. Now, we don't know at this point in time, we don't know that we will get the, we may not get a penny. And so all of those projects and stuff that are out there in the future may just all go away. You know, it's a reality that we could be with just the baseball and softball fields and and stuff that we have right now via the two grants that we've got. You know, that could be it for years until we come up with other ways to pay for it. But we do have that, you know, that five-year plan that we're, with our wish list that we're hoping for. So, you know, it kind of gives people, you know, their citizens, an idea of what we're striving for over the next five years. But it doesn't mean that if we don't get those revenues that any of those projects are gonna happen. You know, treating that water is another one of those. And there's a lot of things out there that we have on our wish list. And that's why I say it's always intended to be at least a 10- to 15-year project. It was... I know it seems like we're trying to cram it all into a couple of years, but yeah, that's definitely not a reality. Yes, Counselor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I feel the same way, that I understand the desire to be frugal, given the money that, you know, we've spent on the storm-related items and whether or not we'll be reimbursed for it. I think I'm a little bit uncomfortable that it seems to be me that we're making a decision here that it's all gonna be made up out of the park and that we're not taking a look at the budget as a whole to decide, are there other areas that might be equally good prospects for helping balance that? So that's, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with that. And then I totally understand the desire to spend money that allows us to reimburse those grant funds. My only question is, is I think you mentioned bathrooms and so forth, but for some reason, I had it in my head that bathrooms don't get us the points that allow us to get reimbursed. And so we really need to make sure that we're focusing on those items that get us reimbursed. And I think it's, you know, whether it be ball fields or the bank shot or whatever, I think it's the athletic-type things that we build that get us points to allow us to get money back. And I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that.
Right. So I'm showing roughly, you know, what we've spent and everything and what we've still got PO purchase orders out there for. I'm showing that we have just under 1.3 million of that 1.36 still out there. Okay? Now, supposedly, we'll get roughly 500,000 of that back once we submit everything. But it'll take two years probably for us to actually get the funds. So if you take that 500,000 out of that 1.3, that leaves us about 800,000 for restrooms and access and anything else. But my... I don't think we need to spend that 800,000. I think we need to do the the access and the restrooms and be good for this fiscal year. Now, when we get to the 27th and we start talking about streets and all of our other CIPs, we can look at, you know, making cuts there so that it's not necessarily looks like it's all coming out of the park. So, you know, there are other ways. We're just not discussing that tonight. But again, I just, I don't wanna... I don't wanna go too far at this point, you know?
Mayor, can I clarify a point just for everyone's benefit? 3.6, the balanced budget that was approved does account a revenue of $500,000 from Texas Parks and Wildlife. This is just a point of clarification on that. So the budget was approved, the city, just breaking down the language a little bit, the city assumed that we were gonna have revenue money coming in at $500,000. So just a point of clarification on that.
Yes, Counselor Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm sorry. I think I'm being a little bit dense about this, but I'm just trying to make sure I understand. You know, after I mentioned that the we need to spend money on athletic-type items in order to get the grant funds back, you kind of circled back around to saying, you know, spending money on access and bathrooms. And so okay, if we spend the money on that, but that's not gonna get us the grant money back, is my understanding?
Right. So we're looking at the four things that Chris mentioned, his thing. Taking out the two ball fields and putting in those four things. That's the athletic, the bank shot, the skate spot, those things. Those would be the athletic things that get us that 500,000. Now, out of the remaining money, what's our priorities? I say it's access and restrooms, and I think that should be it for right now.
Okay, I now, I think I-
That's my personal take.
I totally get it. I think I understand you much better now. I just do want to pose just one question, Mr. Mobley. Though I think when we came up with the original plan for the park, you know, the additional ball fields were there so that we would have enough facilities that we could host tournaments. You know, Little League tournaments and things like that. If we do not build those two additional fields, will we have enough fields where, you know, the Little League could host a tournament here in town, for example?
Yeah. What I take in consideration is we already have two fields in the inventory. We have two fields at the upper complex, and we have two fields at Sunset. It's a little misnomer to think you're gonna get two more fields and then you're gonna have 35 or 40 tournaments a year. It's not gonna happen. And it's... Yeah. So to me, it's just a better use. Could we still? Yeah. Could we still hold regional tournaments and everything? Yeah. Then you can just partner up with somebody that has fields too. You know, but if you're trying to say this would be a really big economic driver, it's... I don't think that it's going, just by professional opinion, baseball playing and attendance and participants are dropping. It's dropped in the two years that I've been here. So to me, it's just a better use of money to broaden the offerings to folks. So now, I understand that was an emphasis, but I don't see it as being a big economic driver.
And that's fine. I like the diversification of what we're offering. I just want to be, everybody be cognizant of the fact that we could have Little League folks coming and lynching us if we don't give what they need to have tournaments. So I've made my point now. I think quite now.
Right.
Mayor, we have an estimate of all the items that Chris was talking about earlier in exhibit, if you care to see it.
Yes. What is it?
Eric, are you want me to share what I've just, I've kind of found out, or?
No, it's okay. I think so we have it on the screen. So this is the alternative that Chris was talking about that could be included and could be, and I say cautiously pending any Texas Parks and Wildlife approval. I believe with the previous grant, we got 85 or 86 points. I believe the cutoff was around 70 points. So if we can get 70 points or above with the added park components and removing the old ones, then we should still be good regardless. This option is actually a little bit cheaper, the option that Chris presented. So what you see here is obviously still includes the volleyball court, the paved parking lot. It does include the skate park that Chris mentioned. There's a playground. Hopefully, oops. That's not what I meant to do.
Yeah, off the parking lot, yeah.
Hopefully. So there's still a playground there. Currently, the bathroom was proposed to be, the small bathroom was supposed to be right next to the playground. The bathroom is not part of that estimate, nor is it part of the Texas Parks and Wildlife reimbursement. This is one option where the basketball court could go, which would be right next to that road or that path that leads down to the ball fields. So as far as the estimate, and I'm showing here an alternative parking lot, but that is a very expensive option if council in the future decides that they want to do that, then obviously it could move that direction. So as far as the estimate, this is Phase 2A alternate phasing. So still here, we have Phase 2 park element, the softball field, and the volleyball court. I do want to mention the softball field has already been built and it's been paid for by last year's budget. But we are still, it's still part of Phase 2, and we're still accounting that as part of our reimbursement total from Texas Parks and Wildlife. Obviously, the engineering, Phase 2 engineering, we already spent the money for the ball field, so we would have to re-engineer this. So there's playground, tables, benches, solar lighting, and everything else. So obviously, we have the skate spot that Chris mentioned earlier. It includes the actual construction, some administrative costs for contractors such as mobilization, bonds, and insurance, and some other components. Obviously, also the basketball court or the bank shot, as Chris mentioned. So overall, this project is just over a million dollars. And so obviously, quite a bit cheaper than the previous phase if assuming that Texas Parks and Wildlife would approve this would approve the change. And I do want to mention, if in the future, city councils say, "We need these big parking lots, 281 spots, a little over $500,000."
So that, what, go back to that sheet? All right. So 1.02. Now, you say the softball court's already been paid for, but we're using it?
Yes, sir. So overall, you're looking about a little over $700,000 out of, for the city. Assuming, again, assuming Texas Parks and Wildlife will accept the exchange.
Okay.
Sorry, but I don't understand the 700,000. We're looking at a million here and a half a million grant, and Mr. Belay just said 700,000. Is that?
Right. So as mentioned, the project total will be about $700,000 since softball field has already been built.
Where is that on the paper?
So the 1.02 minus the 3.63?
No, 1.2.
Minus 90.
Oh, minus 2.90. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I see.
All right. But we would have to spend... At this point, we would have to spend 700,000 or... Let's see. We'd have to-
Mayor, Mayor, I think the best thing to do, if this is council's vision, say, "Hey, we want to switch direction." Best thing to do is look at, see if this is Parks and Wildlife will accept this. It may be that they say you still need points, which means that we're starting to add park elements. So looking at the dollar amounts in detail, other than the grand scheme of things, may be a little bit fruitless at this point.
Okay. Because again, I'm trying to look at, I've got 1.3 available. And if we have to spend six something in addition, because we've already paid for the softball, that's half of, that's half of my money right there, and that doesn't even get us to the road and restrooms. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay.
Well, you have 1.36 million, but that assumes, you actually, in technicality, you have 1.36 million minus $500,000.
Right.
You don't have the $500,000. That's...
Not yet. Yeah. So, yeah. So if you subtract that 500,000, because I can't count on it for two years, that leaves me at 860,000, and you're telling me I've got 660, 700,000 roughly of expense?
Mayor.
Yes.
Star, again. I think it confuses things when we're mixing the revenues with the expenses side. The 1.360 is definitely on the expense side, and it was an approved dollar. The CIP budget is balanced, so we had already taken into consideration that it would be used in general fund reserves plus possibly some grants to cover the 1.3. But regardless of how you look at it, 1.36 is still the amount of money that is on the expense side that is available to spend this year if you also choose. Minus the 45 we've already spent. There's 45, and there's another, I think, 19,000 that is encumbered. But once those are removed, you still have quite a lot, if you don't, if you want to spend it. If you choose not to spend it, that's fine. But mixing the two with, it's 1.36 minus 500,000 was like, well, now you're talking about the revenue side, not the expense side. So the expense side is 1.36. Revenue side is 1.36 on this particular project. It's balanced with revenue, general fund reserves, and the grant money, should we receive it this year. But there was no guarantee we were ever gonna receive it this year. That was just what we were gonna use to help fund the project.
Okay.
Make things confusing, as Star mentioned. There's very likely we won't receive the $500,000 in late 2022.
Okay. I'm just trying to get it straight into my head, because, you know, again, I'm not looking, I'm not wanting to spend 1.3 million at this point. So... Yes, Counselor Prince.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think the summary that I just heard exchanged between Mr. Belay and yourself did not make sense to me. So here's where I thought you were going, Mayor, and I would actually support this, that and we'll need a motion on this at some point, but where my head's at is let's spend the minimum amount in order to qualify for the grant money and then look at any other spending on bathrooms and access. I think that's what you had said, and I would totally support that. Where I thought that conversation went really into confusing land just a few minutes ago was I thought, Mr. Belay said, the 290,000 that was spent last year on the softball field could be used to qualify for this year's grant that we're applying, and therefore, we should only have to spend something like another $210,000. Now, it's not really a dollar amount. It's a points amount. So, but I would suggest a useful exercise might be to say to the staff, "Go back and tell us, and whether you can include last year's softball field or not, tell us what the minimum number of features is that gets us qualified for the $500,000 grant." And then, you know, we can look at approving that, and then tell us what it takes to get bathrooms, and tell us what it takes to get safe access. That's where my head's at.
Right. Very good. Yeah. Can, I know we spent the money already in building, and we were hoping, I guess we're counting on the points that the softball field gives us for Phase 2 grant, I mean, for the second grant, I mean, or did we have to use those points in the first one?
Yeah, I understood the question. I apologize.
Counselor Marion.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. First one is, so the document that's showing on the screen right now First one is, so the document that's showing on the screen right now is different than this version of the document that we, that we got in our March 18th council packet. I have not received a copy of what we're looking on, at on the screen. So I might just suggest that for future, future workshops and things like that, if, if council could get ahold of the documents that are gonna be shared during the work session ahead of time, to review and, you know, jot down questions on it, things like that. I think that would be helpful, number one. At least, for me, anyway, seeing it right now for the first time isn't, isn't very helpful. And the second thing I would ask is, what happens if Texas Park and Wildlife comes back and says, no, we won't allow you to substitute those things? Then, are we gonna have to come back and have another discussion as to whether or not we even want to continue with Phase Two? Or are we basically saying, if they say no, now we're back to other proposal that we? Sorry, that we got a few weeks ago?
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a possibility.
Yeah, I think at that time, you'd, you'd have a certain budget, and you said, okay, to meet the things that we need to meet this on, then you start taking out elements to, to make sure you get to that number. I mean, there's, there's cost of all fields, there's cost to all of that, so, I guess what's really important right now is to see that what we do meets the grant. I think that's important, and, and priorities. I'd be a little disappointed if I have to wait two years for a, a playground, to be real honest with you, because that park needs a playground. It's not really a park unless there's places for, for kids to play. That's my professional three cents worth, and I won't say anything else.
And Chris, playground is part of the Phase Two components.
Okay.
Uh, I just have one simple question. Does either Mr. Mobley or Mr. Belay have a good feel for how long it takes for us to get an answer back from Texas Parks and Wildlife?
Last time we did this, because we did a grant amendment in 2018, it took about three weeks, if I recall. There was a lot of back and forth during that time. Usually, what I foresee is gonna happen is, they're gonna say, you don't have enough points, and they're gonna give us some options to get points to make it happen. Unfortunately, options cost money, and, uh, that budget, the original budget that you come up with, just kind of gets blown out the window, so.
I think that what would be helpful for me is to see if we're in the right direction with taking out the fields and getting more amenities, and that will kind of get me to, we're not as far behind when we decide what we wanna do. And I can, I can get with them and say, these are the things we're, we're subbing, you know, what do we got? So.
Well, and, so, Mayor, the only suggestion I would make is, is that potentially, we have two items on the April 27th meeting. Circle back on the park, if we have information back from Texas Parks and Wildlife and the, the streets issue. It, no, anyway.
Right, so, Chris or Eric, do we know that softball field, will we get the, do those points count toward the second one?
I, I'd have to, I'd have to recert, well, I think we actually have a sheet that showed how we got the point. So I just have to look and see if that's something we submitted at the time, or something we can submit now.
So, Mayor, you do get points for different components that you, you propose. And the, the crazy thing about getting points is, if you add one component, and if you match it with a separate component that sometimes doesn't go with that, then you get extra points. So, kind of like having a playground, but if you add outdoor exercises, equipment for the elderly, then you get five extra points. So it's not necessarily, so it just doesn't really make sense. Looking at it from a 30, 35,000-foot view, but overall, that's, that's how the grant is set up, it's just, you add components to it, and that's basically what happened in 2016. They added components, they made it as cheap as possible, and and without thinking about what, what all the other associated items that were needed to get built.
Yeah. Counselor Prince.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm still not hearing the answer to the mayor's question from Mr. Belay. I think Mr. Mobley got it and took a note to go answer it, right? So do those softball fields, can we count them going forward, or did we always use those points up in the past? That's, that's the question to be answered. But, Mike, so, Mr. Mobley, if you understood that question, you've taken that, that would be great. Thank you. My other question is, on these changes of features, going from ball fields to, you know, bank shots and playgrounds and all these things, has that discussion been held in our Parks and Rec Commission that we, we pulled forward? Because it seems like, first, first and foremost, we need to get those folks to look at it and give us feedback on the, on the trade-offs and options.
It'll actually be discussed on April the 12th, that's when we, Parks and Rec has a, a, a meeting, and then will probably also be on the 14th. What I was waiting for was some kind of feedback and direction from, from council to be able to discuss with them that. So, kind of put council in front of that. And the thing is, I, I just started working on what I'd like, what I'd like to do with Phase Two, just within the last couple of weeks, when I found out that you guys were meeting to talk about it. Because up till now, what, it was, we were just gonna do ball fields. And I got with Mayor Tidwell and, and interim City Manager Chan and said, can I put my two cents worth in after I've been here a year and a half about what I think would be more successful? So that's kind of how we got to where we're at.
Yeah, that's great, I mean, your opinion is infinitely more valuable on features at park than mine. But I do look forward to hearing what the, what the park commission folks have to say about it.
All right. So, the direction that I have, A, we're wanting to see how many, how many points, you know, that we currently have towards this second grant, especially if this softball field is, can be used toward this second grant. And then, if we substitute out the, take out the ball fields and we put in these other projects, does that give us enough points? So we need staff to bring back, you know, an answer from Parks and Wildlife, whether we, our, our ideas get us enough points. And if it does, then we need, we also need to know the associated cost with those four. I know we got that one spreadsheet you were showing us with the 1.02 minus the 290. Anyway, we got that, but we need clarification on, on the actual cost of what we're putting in to meet the grant. And then we need to look at our other priorities, the access and the restrooms, and we need an idea of what that would cost us. Those are the things that I know we need for our next meeting. Is there anything else, Counselor Marion?
Um, if we could circle back on getting an idea of what it's costing us to water, or what we think it'll, will cost us to water the fields moving forward, because I think that's an important part of the budget we need to think about.
I've got that on my list.
All right, yes, Counselor Sullivan.
Mayor, the only thing I was gonna say with regard to the restrooms, it might be nice if they look at options. If you remember, we brought up the fact that at the last chamber lunch, the mayor at, at Jonestown talked about the bathroom facilities they got for Jonestown, uh, Jones Brothers Park for 45 grand. It was a mobile event trailers type thing, and it had a significant number of stalls for both sexes. That might be an, an expensive way for us to accomplish what we need there. So just, if, 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 if that can be at least looked into, I think that'd be helpful.
Right. So, yeah, that's part, that's part, that's part of that estimate on our priorities, going, you know, the access and the restrooms. Now, what are, what are all the options for our restrooms, and, you know, associated costs? Yes, Counselor Prince.
Um, on the restrooms, the mayor of Jonestown told me that they were able to use hotel occupancy tax to pay for those restrooms. And so that's another reason why that is potentially very appealing.
All right. So Aaron, Aaron and Roger will have to look into our hot tax to see if that's a, how we go about using that expense. Counselor Marion.
And, and Mayor, do we know, if we've heard anything back from LCRAs as to whether or not they would even approve septic out there? If we have it, that's probably something else that we need to know before we continue to have discussions, especially about restrooms.
All right. Anybody else? Excuse me. Have you seen more hands?
No, I'm good.
All right. Well, at this point, then I will allow comments from the public regarding this subject. I will remind you, it's not a, it's not a debate and question and answer. It's three minutes for you to provide comments and for council to think on going into our next meeting. So who do I have that would like to make some comments? No one? All right, well, if that is everybody, then I think we have our direction for our next meeting. And on the agenda, it says, future meetings, consider scheduling items for future council work sessions. Do we wanna shoot for the 27th? For the, for bringing this back, do you think that's enough time? 22 days?
I, I thought the 27th was Loman Ford-
It is, it is, but somebody had suggested earlier to add this to that agenda, since we already had that work sedge session scheduled, save us from scheduling another one. And I guess we can do that. Obviously, if we don't have Parks and Rec, Parks and Wildlife's answer by then, we can table it, but.
Yeah, Mayor, that was my only idea, if we had the information back, it might be convenient to add it to the 27th.
Okay. All right, so for fut- for the future work session, obviously, we have the streets, other CIP projects. And we'll tentatively put parks back on.
Mayor, just to clarify, you said streets and other CIP projects. Does that mean we're going to get into water and wastewater projects in that session, or not?
Uh, we can, yes. I just, I don't have any specific CIP projects in mind, I just thought, at this point, we needed to, to look at our projects. Hopefully, we'll have some expenses, more clarification on our winter storm expenses. I, I don't know if we'll have any kind of answers from FEMA or not, but should at least have our, a good idea of our expenses. There's still some out there with our brush clearing and debris pickup, and obviously, Loman Ford Road is a big one. So, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right, well, if that is everything, I will call this meeting adjourned at 8:19 PM.
Have a good one.
Thank you all.